I am David Davis, supervisor of the United States of America, and you have heard all of our speeches on my name in the Capitol. We're looking at this.
Thank you. Our mayor always loves to have this opportunity and be able to manage to her. We're going to administer a bill for a police officer, Brian Daniel Roder. I don't know, Chief, do you want to make an introduction?
I'd like to introduce Brian Roder. Brian is the newest police officer in Oregon. He is a federal officer with the police department. He's had him on board and has continued that position. He's worked in the city of Oregon. Well, Brian, the office can see more than just what we're doing. I think if there's people who are interested in this, we'll open it up in the evening. We'll ask them to do evaluation of all the businesses. And we're supposed to have you here. We're going to assess all people. Also here with me, our mayor, is a local engineer. And the witness is a former officer in the home of the city. You have, uh, why would?
You have a form of office record, sir? You're on business?
No.
Well, I have, I'm just trying to have a little. Say, I, your name?
I, Brian Roder.
Just only swear?
Do someone swear?
That I will uphold the law?
That I will uphold the law?
And support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon?
And support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics?
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics?
And the department's rules and regulations?
And the department's rules and regulations?
While faithfully pursuing my duties?
While faithfully pursuing my duties?
As police officer for Oregon City, Oregon?
As police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Well, congratulations. Also, this time, going to go ahead and have a project update on the Westland Arch Bridge Rehabilitation.
On the what?
Oh, my God!
Oh, man!
Appreciate. So, in this period, in this period of the fact, in that period, when the fact that it's closed for a few years, I want to tell you that it's a long, 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 long way. Gentlemen, are you going to come forward? I think he's speaking. Are you going to talk yourself?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll be fine.
Well, thank you very much for having us, Oregon Department of Transportation, here before the commission. We have been working very hard to get this project going. And it is my pleasure to be here, as well as my colleagues. And they are two bridge pictures. Oh. Susan Hanson, Katie Burleson, Richard Watanabe, he's the area manager for this area. And Chris Leatham, he is the Virginia Engineer for this project. And Wayne Stattler, he is the project manager for construction. And I am Rick Keen, the project manager for design. So, as I mentioned, we have come a long way. We've actually started construction from a start of about three years ago to this point now. And again, we're very excited about this project. We think it's just going to be a very exciting time for the city when you see a couple of years of very beautiful historic structure brought back to life. It does spin around for about 90 years now and needs a facelift. And we're going to give it to you. It's going to look beautiful. So, with that, though, I think the most important thing right now for the city is to get an understanding of where we are in the construction phase. And with that, I'll introduce Wayne Stattler, and he'll give you an update as to what's happening and what will occur in the near future.
Hopefully, you have an age like this in front of you. Actually, an iconic structure looking ahead. A structure looking ahead. Before I start, I'd like to say, I'm not a native of Oregon City. But I have to tell you, the first time I saw that bridge as a civil engineer, I fell in love with it. I've loved it ever since, since the six-year. The bridge is currently low, restricted to 14 tons and no commercial vehicles, which is part of the reason why we're rehabilitating the bridge to get it back to its original capacity. Construction contract has been awarded for $10,657,000. And the contractor is Wildish Standard Paving. And they're really a first-line Oregon company. The contractor has established a field office. It's in a parking lot on the other side of the bridge. Can I say Westland? The Westland side of the bridge. And you will notice that barges have been brought to the site, and they're under the bridge right at the moment. They came down through the lock, which was quite a show if you got to see it. Jets barely fit. Right now, we're opening up the arch chambers. The arch chambers are right where the arch hits the water. They're hollow inside. We're trying to take out, build out silt and other things. And we're going to inspect the new part of the bridge inside the arch chamber. Work that'll occur this fall, they're going to start crack injection in the ramp on the Oregon City side. If you get down, you'll see cracks. We're going to inject substance snow to keep this fracture standing. They're going to clean and repair bridge bearings. That's also on the Oregon City side, very much. And they're going to start installing shoring on what they call the scamble columns. The scamble columns are the columns on the bottom of the arch holding the bridge up. And they have to shore those up before they can continue because, once again, the bridge is low-rated and you have to get it up for a construction traffic. The central date for the full closure of the bridge is still January 15th or later. It will not be before. It may be a little later. The reason we picked that date is so you can have the holiday season without interference with the bridge closure. There's going to be a shuttle service provided to take bicyclists and pedestrians from one end of the bridge to the other. We're forming a working group to talk about that shuttle, what it should do, how it will operate, and so forth. Since the group has not met yet, I can't give any more details. But there's going to be a shuttle of some sort. The I-5 Abernathy Bridge is the detour while the bridge is closed. And at the intersection of 99E and I-205, once the bridge closes, we're going to bring our traffic engineers down. They're going to look at the timing of the traffic lights and try to minimize any inconvenience to the public that'll be now not able to cross the bridge, but will have to get on I-205 at that point. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, how specifically, or you know? Well, one question I have, this is very specific. The light fixtures on the bridge. Well, one thing I wanted to say, too, there's representatives here from the Church tonight for a different topic. But the length that you guys, that O'Donnell has gone to to do the research on the bridge and stuff, and how that bridge is going to look when it's done, I'm so excited about it. The light fixtures, they're going to, they'll be pointing up as they did. All right, what are they pointing up?
The, the, um...
The lanterns, yeah, with the picture, oh, right there. Okay, so you see the two lanterns? And if you look on the lanterns on the Atkinson Church building, they're exactly, almost identical to the light fixtures that were on the bridge. And the bridge was built 1922, the church 1924, I think. But what's different about them is that on the pictures of the bridge, I think the lights face up with the lamp on the top. And at the church, they face down with the lamp on the bottom. So, I know that in connection with those two, that you've probably looked at that. But is, I mean, I'm assuming the ones on the bridge will still be like they were?
I'll let, let's look for a sample question. We actually have some old photos of the bridge, and they were...
Well, I do, too. I have them, and they're, they're down.
They're down.
Right.
Chris knows a lot more about those, the history of those lamps, so maybe he can help clarify.
Could you come up so I can catch your microphone, please?
Excuse me. When they were first put on the bridge, the globes were down. Acorn globes were down. There was a time in the history of the bridge, and we've got some photographs of that, where they actually moved them up. You're correct. So, they were on the top, as our drawing indicates. The orientation that we're going to be putting on the bridge is identical to the orientation that's on the church right now. So, the acorn globes will be pointing down. And they, light that's going to go on will be an exact replica of the light that's on the church.
I collect old Oregon City postcards. And when I knew the bridge restoration project was happening, I looked at a lot of my old pictures. And I walked out of the church one day, and I thought, those are the lights. I mean, they were just, I just, I couldn't believe it. And I think, and I sent you a picture, or at least said something about it.
I bet you would.
It looks a little like that. I'm just, it's, it's exciting to see those connections in history throughout the city. And so, one of the things that we, as a city commissioner, were, you know, concerned about with the restoration of the promenade, and especially this, this structure, that, you know, it looks the way it looks. And I just thank you for the length of time that you've spent in making sure that when this bridge opens, it will look like it was when it was built.
Be as close as we can get.
Right.
There are things that we can't duplicate that were back then. For instance, the globe. We can't get a globe with a neck that was built back then. So, it may look a little bit different than what it did before. But it'll be as close as we can get.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to make a comment. I was in a coffee shop, this is a few months ago, with a friend of mine. He was from last night. He said, "Well, why don't you tear it down in the noon?" I responded with a very loud "What?", very extremely loud, however. And everybody in the coffee shop around looked at me. So, I repeated his question so that everybody that could hear him could almost move out of the coffee shop. But in any case, I think you've made the point thirty times that actually replacing a bridge would be far more expensive than this restoration. Right?
That's correct. We're talking probably ten, fifteen times the expense.
Yeah. And also, the fundamental fact, this is built by one of the most famous Oregon bridge architects. Did a couple of coastal bridges.
Also, major coastal bridges were done by Conny McCullough. He is considered, in his time, one of the top ten engineers in the world.
Yeah. So, this, I mean, this is a tremendous asset that we have here. And I am so pleased that you're approaching it the way you are. I want to thank you very much. I like it very, just in case anybody has questions. Questions, not commentary. They're questions of, of, in my, they're here from the audience. If you could come up, maybe we could use one of these microphones if you actually had any questions. Does anybody in the audience have questions? Mr. May? Will you please, I'm sorry?
Damon, maybe you're not a resident. One question that I'm getting a lot is, when the work is done, is the bridge going to be two lanes or like a one-lane traffic control because of width and like transit and all that?
The, the bridge will be identical to what it is now. It will have two lanes on it. It will still be as constricted as it is now because we have to put bumpers back on where the arch ribs penetrate the deck. So, the look and feel will be identical to the way it is now.
Thanks. Mr. West?
What will the time limit be after the bridge is built? I'm assuming it's going to go up a little more, or no?
I'm sorry.
The time limit for trucks? What will it be after? You said it's dropped down to 14.
That's correct. And we will be fixing the issues that have dropped it down to 14. By the time we're through, it should be open for legal loads.
Okay. And then, you were, the other gentleman was saying that you're hoping to start January 15th, but it might not. So, what are the factors that would alter its starting rate, or what?
Thank you for that question, because I'm going to let him into the house.
Construction action is, the outcome of every project is uncertain. I can't really tell you the factors. It could be things like particularly severe weather, high water. As we're doing the scamble columns, we may find a surprise. So, they're all unknowns. But this is the greatest project I've ever been on. Everything's unknown because everything's covered with gunite and concrete. And until we get it off, we've done a lot of homework, but we're not absolutely sure. We do have a schedule that, the guarantee I want to make is, we will not close it before the 15th. In other words, if everything goes perfectly, they're still going to have to look at the 15th. If everything goes south on us, it may be a little later than the 15th. And what, I'm not saying like two months later, maybe the end of January.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, either from the commission or the elements? I've got a statement, and I have a question.
This one probably has a vague answer, too. And that's the completion date. We hope that two years, right? So...
Well, actually, it's 23 months. In the bidding process, one of the things we put into debt is, they could get points if they would commit to finishing a month earlier. The original completion date is 15th of October. They committed to finishing a month earlier, so it's 15th of September. So, it's 23 months.
So, that's 23 months from now.
23 months from January 15th.
January 15th, yeah.
And 23 months from January 15th.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
They have full closure. The project will actually move on sometime after that. The bridge will be open for traffic.
Okay.
Maybe they'll be peeping or this type of thing.
I know, earlier times, we brought this up. When we create constraints on the bridges, when we have private buses coming over, I don't know what climate's plans are. They, I think there's, I think the buses are, at least the 30 plus, 35 is still using the I-205 bridge. But should the decision be made that climate wishes to go ahead and use those bridges, and I hope they do, whether it be possible to have a signalization which allows the bus driver to actually stop traffic from entering the bridge? Because most drivers are very reluctant to go across that bridge and see uncoming, uncoming traffic. Their width barely corresponds to the width of their wing. And I wonder if you could comment on that.
I have asked our region traffic engineer that very question about signaling, specifically for bus traffic and stopping for them to pass unencumbered through the arches. And his response was, no, because there are some inherent difficulties with just stopping traffic just for buses. I'm not a traffic engineer, but what I will do, since, Commissioner, you have asked this question several times, and I think you deserve, and this commission and cities deserve a very well-thought-out and detailed answer to that. So, what I'm going to do is ask our traffic engineer to supply you with a very detailed description and reason why that might be problematic. Maybe that would help understand what the situation is and why that might not work in this situation. So, that's my promise to the commission.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have now the time that we set up for citizens' comments. So, we would like to prevent, raise some comments, who fill out the comment card and turn it in to Mrs. Iad. And as you come up, just introduce yourself and indicate whether or not you're a resident of Oregon City. And I have somebody that's listed, Tom O'Brien.
Thank you. Doug indicated, I'm Tom O'Brien, and I am a resident of Oregon City. Initially, I wanted to share my concern regarding a decision that had been made by staff to only require a one-for-one replacement of the 96 cotton trees along Agnes Avenue. These were in large part healthy trees with significant canopies. City code requires, if the trees are not diseased or hazardous, they should be replaced on a schedule of between one to eight replacement trees per tree removed. The exact number depends upon the diameter of the original tree. However, during my research concerning the city staff decision, I learned why staff had determined that these should be replaced one-for-one instead of the more appropriate replacement schedule. On 6 August 2010, Tony Conville sent a summary of the actions taken regarding the tri-city tree removal to David Frecher. One paragraph in that summary creates concern. I'd like to read it to you. Quote, "To highlight some of the findings of the arborist, the report indicates that it is commonly agreed that cottonwood trees are unsuitable for retention along roadways. As an example, the city of Sherwood, Oregon specifically prohibits cottonwood trees along public streets. Cottonwood trees have a species characteristic of dropping large branches with little provocation, known as summer branch drop. And such failures often occur on dry summer days with no wind. Over a river, this characteristic provides an adaptive way to reproduce by colonizing sites downstream with the dropped branches. Over a roadway, the same branch can cause traffic disruption, property damage, and personal injury. The arborist considers all of the cottonwoods within 50 feet of the proposed road to be potentially hazardous and recommends that the trees be removed to improve public safety." End quote. Accordingly, cottonwood trees within 50 feet of a road should be considered potentially hazardous. Agnes Avenue is a lightly trawled road. Do we have areas in the city that, because of their heavier use, provide potentially greater danger to our public? I believe the answer is yes. Consider for a moment visitors to Clackamette or John Storm Parks. Envision further a group of mourners gathered around a burial site at Mountain Dew Cemetery paying their last respects, when suddenly, a limb from a cottonwood tree descends upon the group. The city commission members, you each share in the responsibility, along with city employees and volunteers, to regulate and maintain public health and safety. Now that we are aware of this threat to public safety, every effort should be made to eliminate cottonwood trees from any area where they exist on city properties. Thank you.
Does that have any comment? I guess I have a tendency to react to that in areas that are in the floodg drain. The reason cottonwoods are so common in that particular area, and that means Clackamette Park as well, is when a plant comes through, it wipes out most of the older cottonwoods, but it's the, one of the first species to colonize that particular area. So, it's a tree that's evolved for that particular kind of environment. A lot of our city properties are becoming more and more open spaces, places where, in fact, you might have some visitors coming into, but they're intended to be natural areas. And if we were to adopt something like that, I guess we'd have to get special consideration areas that are intended to be natural areas just because of the, of the nature of the species and by its back history. So, that's my only reaction to your comments. You said all city properties. Did anybody else have comments? During this meeting, I think we go through the period of the adoption of the agenda, whether there's anything to be reordered, pulled from the consent agenda. And I do have one request from Mrs. Frecher that because of their similarity in the topics, that seven B and a C be combined together. Is there any issue with this?
No.
Actually, they're separate deeds of dedication, so they'll be treated differently for the presentation purposes that they could be combined together. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and do that. Any, any other issues, consent agenda, or otherwise? Hearing none, I guess we proceed. The first thing we have is, under general business, Atkinson Memorial Park is requesting a permanent search in three alley right-of-way. And it's a revocable right-of-way permit. I think we'll have to ask staff to explain what all this means. And I think several of us will have questions about it.
Good evening, Commission President Neely and Commissioner.
Oh, excuse me. Fine, bye. Yes, and Mr. Smith, the commissioner, is going to have to recuse himself for reasons that he can speak to.
I'm an employee of Atkinson Church, so I'll be sitting in the hall.
He's finally stepped in, and they give us no horn signals out there or anything of the sort.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, they asked to, the church was asked to put up a fence along the edge of the alley. And interestingly enough, the fence would actually be placed on lawn that is next to the pavement that people think of as the alley. The alley right-of-way is actually extends into an adjoining structure and into the grass on both sides. That, these are the kinds of things that happen in all neighborhoods, as you're all aware. They have a temporary relocation of their, their, of their preschool. And in order to create a playground for the children, they want to establish it in an area where it would be right next to the, just the alley. And they would like to put a fence in so it protects the children. And we see no problem with this. This is actually for, I believe, a three-year period while the church improvements are being made. It's actually two years, I'm sorry. It's been requested for two years. So, because it's more than nine, more than 60 days, it is not a temporary right-of-way permit. And the temporary right-of-way permit, we can approve at the staff level. But those that are over 60 days are considered permanent right-of-way permits, and those need to be approved by the city commission. We do not have any objections to this particular right-of-way permit, and we do recommend that you approve it for a period of two years. And the city always remains, we have always the right to revoke it at any time. And if they find that they need to extend the time of it, we would, I think that we would not, we would certainly consider it at that time.
And President of the commission? Mr. West?
Ms. Frecher, so I drove by to look at that, and I see the grass and the playground on it. But I'm looking at the picture here. So, is the fence going to go over into the alley on the block, or?
The fence will be on the lawn.
Okay, the fence is on the lawn, and the lawn just happens to be part of the alley.
The right-of-way.
Oh, the, okay. Picture isn't quite there. The same there. And as far as closing it off, what was I reading in there? How is that going to play out?
Well, it won't close the alley at all. It will, so traffic will still be able to flow through it. They suggested, and we agreed with them, that it would be a good idea to put a bollard at one end of the fence. They've got a phone, or a utility pole at one end that'll prevent people from wanting to drive into the fence. We suggested they put a bollard at the other end to, and that was, we all agree to that. But there's, like I said, in an older... But there's, like I said, in an older neighborhood, you do find garages, things in the alleyways, and we don't go after those situations unless we're needing the right-of-way for a particular purpose. And the fact that there's lawn in that right-of-way is just another example. And the fence would go on the lawn, yeah.
Wouldn't affect the pavement at all.
Yeah, people aren't driving on the lawn.
Well, with that, I-
I don't have a question.
Okay.
If, this is not going to impede the traffic at all, but if we had a vehicle that accidentally damages the fence, the city would underperform, no liability.
No, this is, that's part of the permit, is replace all the responsibility on the applicant and the permittee. Permit holder.
Any other questions? I've got, actually, I think I've got somebody from the audience, Greg Stoltz, is that right? Come forward, if you would.
My name's Greg Stoltz, I'm a resident of Oregon City. I am the school board president for the city preschool, so I'm speaking in support of this request. As the staff said, it's not going to actually change the flow of traffic there. We're not going on the asphalt or anything like that. From the preschool's perspective, it's a safety issue. We have our playground that's going into that side yard because of the change of the preschool over to this temporary building. We've already got a play structure in there. The, from what I understand, the property line right now, if we had to adhere to that to put the fence on, it would render that yard almost useless for us. It puts it almost halfway across the yard and wouldn't give us any room for a playground. The only alternative that we would have in that case is to, you know, post parents at corners, you know, whenever the children are outside, and just keep a very close eye on the situation, so. The fence is a short fence, it's about a three-foot-high cedar fence. We've already, we're essentially moving it from the old playground over to the, to this new playground. So visually, it's very low, doesn't impede any views of anything, and it's a very open, bored kind of fence, so. Generally, I think it's going to be a pretty low impact.
Maybe also, should we question the street?
Yes, my name's David Neely, resident of Oregon City, still haven't moved since the earlier breach comment. And I'm also speaking as the chair of the McGougha Neighborhood Association. A couple of items, first, this came to us very quickly. We received prior notice that this was going to occur until we got the agenda for the city commission. So, I did a very quick email poll. And in general, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's a child safety issue, and we're okay with that initially. When you look at it, it's like, oh my God, they're going to close the alley. As long as there's freedom of movement, it's not a major concern. There might be some issues, I know some people, you know, there's a neighbor who brings their trailer with their boat through there. With the fence being as low as it is, there probably shouldn't be a clearance issue, but, you know, it's, it does get used. It gets used by pedestrians, by cars on a fairly regular basis. The, I guess, since it is revocable, I guess the thing we'd request is that it's two years or end of construction, whichever occurs first. So it isn't one of those fences that just kind of gets left there, and thirty years from now, everybody just assumes there's supposed to be a fence there, and you kind of lose track of things. That's also how things get done in older neighborhoods. I've always had a fence there, so now it's my property. On a personal comment, the fence is low, which is good for visibility, but now it's, the preschool's moving from two open traffic streets to adjacent to an alley. And in light of some of the recent issues with child disappearing and all that, I have a little bit of concern that the fence is long enough for somebody to, you know, grab a kid, disappear around the corner of Judge Tom's building, and be out of sight quickly, as opposed to where its previous location was. So, I don't know, maybe a higher, you know, like back away from the road a little bit, you know, so you can still, if you pull up, you can see traffic and pull out. But maybe further back, it might be at four feet rather than three feet. That makes it above an easy adult bend over height. But that's just a personal concern, it's not anything that the neighborhood said. I changed hats in the middle of this comment, but other than that, you know, it meets with the quick poll, since I wasn't able to actually get out to the neighborhood and get a poll.
Regarding the safety issue, can you respond to that? Yes, please. Are those the children are always supervised or?
Yeah, absolutely, that's a good concern. But yes, we always, it's a cooperative preschool, so there's always three parents there with the students. And definitely during playtime, all the parents have to be out on the field, and we're very concerned about that. We don't let parents congregate in a corner, we don't let them talk on cell phones. And I think the strategy we would use, because the playground is a bit L-shaped, is probably at least have one person staying on the corner so they could view both directions, and then a person toward the back corner that's on the alley side, who would be, you know, in a good position to make sure nobody was coming up that alley. And then somebody on the front side as well, near the Jefferson Street side, so that, again, they could be just keeping an eye on that whole side.
Is there any reasonable expectation that other children after hours might gain access to this playground?
In our experience, yes, that we do have, we've seen evidence that other kids come on the playground. The church does use the playground too for their Sunday school activities, but we've never been able to effectively block the use of the playground by anybody. We don't lock the gates, so it definitely happened.
I don't know what's going to inhibit our decision here, but do you have a, do you think you can accommodate Mr. May's concern in terms of the height of the fence?
I think we could, if that's a requirement, yes. I would offer that, prefer not to, because we're actually, we have an existing fence. We were able to reuse, we left the poles, but we just pulled the fence sections out, and then we're just going to reset new poles and drop those sections in, so there would be some additional cost to us. But if that was a requirement, we could absolutely do that.
I agree. Any other comments to the commission or neighbors you have? I've got a request here from, I think, William Gifford, to speak.
My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I currently do not reside at that big five-one-seven location, but because I used to, I have some intimate knowledge of that area, and I just want to, I really have no opinion because I don't live there anymore, one way or the other, but I just want to make sure that some things are taken into consideration. Specifically, the history of that area. Directly across the street from five-seventeen is the residence of five-fourteen Jefferson Street. I don't need to mention their names, but when they moved in there, four, five years ago, they attempted to put a fence down that alley line at the same location that this instance is being proposed. They had the fence up, and the neighbors at five-oh-eight said, "We can't get through there because they come through our boat, that's a right-of-way, you can't do that." And they had to go through considerable expense to take down the fence and move it. They had already poured the concrete posts and everything, and they had to move the fence. I think it's going to seem a little peculiar with those folks, for what it's worth, that they had to move their fence off of the back of the property line, and yet here the city is allowing the other fence to be put into the, into the, past the property line. Another couple of things is although Judge Tom's residence, I shouldn't have mentioned the name. The residence at seven fifteen with the garage that's indicated is into the right-of-way, of course, it's been there a long time, does occasionally have, need access behind that, what's called the carriage house of that residence. And I'm just wanting to make sure that they're able to turn in there with the fence there. Maybe if they were coming the other direction, it would be easier to turn, but coming in this way, occasionally you have trucks and so on that go in there. And I don't know if that's being taken into consideration. And another thing is the width of the alley that's shown in all these drawings. The line sure is going right up to the carriage house, but in fact, there is about a foot or two of a little space there. Just, I know it kind of intimately because I planted it with wildflowers because I couldn't stand all of Judge Tom's weeds in there. So, so that-
They're supposed to use his name?
I'm not using Judge Tom's name, even if this is probably it. So, I guess the point is that that's a little narrower than it actually looks. And the reason why that's significant is because, as Mr. Maybe pointed out, this area is used considerably for traffic. And although it's wide enough, it's not wide enough for a car and a pedestrian, and that's a concern that I have. I'm concerned about cars coming that direction anyway. There ought to be a watch out because it's crosswalk, because when you, when you're headed towards Jefferson Street from that alley, you really can't see around the corner, and pedestrians or skateboarders or cyclists are coming on the Jefferson Street sidewalk. They really can't see each other around the corner, and I wish that there was a stop sign or a watch out for pedestrians sign there, especially if there's going to be more use of the children in that area. I would really suggest getting a sign up on that carriage house, even though it sticks into the right-of-way, saying, "Watch out for pedestrians," if this has, if this has, if this fence has to be that close. I guess that's all the things that I could think about, but I just needed to share all that with you. The issue of the right-of-way had been addressed with a neighbor directly across the street, and they were told that, no, they could not put a fence there, they hadn't moved the fence, even though they had already constructed it. And I know that the neighbors at five-oh-eight have a large truck and a boat that they use for fishing almost every weekend, and they come down that alley so that they can back into their lot behind the residence of five-oh-eight. So those are just some things that I just want you to consider.
Are these nearby residences notified? Did we give the demo three hundred foot?
No, this doesn't require that kind of notification. This is an over-the-counter kind of a transaction, and then we have, we bring it to you.
But does that mean that, for example, the folks at five-fourteen and five-oh-eight would have gotten no notice that this is on the agenda, correct?
That's correct. And likely, in that situation, they hadn't applied for a permit. And, you know, I, but just, I don't really want to go there with that, any more comment on that.
I figure the people who are applying, the way that they had a fence, it was not a permitted fence.
Five-fourteen, if they put up a fence. Yeah, five-fourteen put up a fence.
And so it wasn't permitted, that's a different issue, but I guess they do have a concern that these, it does have potential impact to those properties, particularly seven-fifteen. A lot more questionable personally, if these, those, I'll call them adjacent properties, and my people are across the street, and get notified.
I'm very uncomfortable with that.
I mean, it's John's flying, I mean, I just want to make sure that everybody had been considering that.
Only is a five property could be removed, so. You have a recommendation?
I wouldn't recommend that this be continued until such time as the surrounding property owners could be notified.
That's a broken motion.
Some of.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm forward. Any other Oregon City residents that you are?
No. We're on Forsyth, resident on the consular's committee of that consent memorial charter. If you notice on the plan, and I have no idea what these other neighbors that he's referring to and what the situation was there, but there is a power pole on the corner that if a vehicle comes past that power pole, it can make it next to the fence, so I don't know what the situation was across the street, but.
I mean, if I'm sure, if you ever brought this to us, the concern is more the fact that adjacent property owners weren't notified. From our standpoint. Yeah. And I think I saw another hand? Did I, or not? Okay. And so that was a motion?
Yes, you can say.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear.
Yeah, it was moving that we continue to start the item until such time as the surrounding property owners could be duly noticed in case they wanted to make comments on this proposal.
Second it?
I see Mr. Solomon looks like he wants to say something.
I would recommend that you do to a date certain. So, maybe the next meeting of the commission, be sure if there's those, you can give them.
Actually, our staff wouldn't do that, we would ask the applicant to take care of that. This is not a requirement of us, and we'd rather not make that a normal requirement, permit unless it changes.
It could not be done within a week or so? To manage the neighbors.
And how many neighbors?
Well, the ones that I think have been brought up here are the ones of interest, the ones at seven-fifteen, five-oh-eight, and five-fifteen. That's probably sufficient.
I just don't like to be cautious about it. When we ask the city attorney typically, would notice on a land use issue for a site like this be three hundred feet?
It's, yes, if you, well, it's one hundred feet for cities and it's up to three hundred for counties.
Okay, well, one hundred feet is not far, it's not unreasonable.
What you might want to do is to use a portion of the block that's affected and do one hundred feet on either side of the alley.
I will incorporate the suggestion of the city attorney to my motion. And recommend, and move that the continuing speed to the first city commission meeting in September, because I don't want to delay the project.
I think it would be important, well, first of all, we would be happy to provide, I just, for the church, because that's sometimes a hard thing to figure out. So I would recommend that they come and talk to our services group tomorrow. And then we might want to have a, what are we looking for from the notice? Are we looking for absolutely? Yeah, okay, so opportunity to speak in the next commission meeting, not necessarily a yay or a nay from each one, or authority rolls, or, because that's sometimes, we need to-
He's getting the opposing concerns.
Opportunity to speak in the next, I just wanted that to be clear for us and the applicants, so we know what we're doing.
And I might just suggest that just often be copied, and you could just use this copy too, those residences. All the information we have is in here.
Well, perhaps with a cover letter indicating that there's a area.
Yes. Have I heard that?
Nope, not yet, I have another question to solve. So are we setting up a little land use, so a mini land use process, or whether there's none required or none needed? And are we in a position to regulate, you know, so what's the notice, what if they didn't read the notice?
Okay. First of all, there's no requirement under orders for notice, you're not setting up a mini land use. The commission is exercising discretion if it chooses to do this. I'm, as a lawyer, I'm never comfortable with a notice that I haven't read or supervised. I'll be glad to look at it, as Grace, I asked for you, but I think it would be sufficient to have a letter, cover letter with the material that's in the record now, going out to people and saying, "On the second or third of September, this matter will be continued, and the commission will decide it."
Thank you.
I heard say?
Second.
You call the mission?
Commissioner Nardisida.
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
And Commissioner five minute Neely?
Aye.
The next few items are being combined together. They both feel the deeds of dedication, temporary destruction easements along Beaver Creek Road will be introduced both in jointly, but I'll be voting. Well, we, we don't need, the Washington Rivers tie vote. Sorry, thank you. And we'll be voting on these items separately, but I think for convenience, they're both briefly submitted together. I present this question, right?
Yes, please, so, yes. So, we have been working kind of in the background on the right lane, division of an eastbound right lane that we could go to Malala, to have the right turns onto Southbound Malala, to just help the traffic flow through that intersection. The construction of it was postponed because we turned our focus on to the Warner Millie project. Originally, these two projects were combined, the Warner Millie project and the Beaver Creek Road right turn lane. But the need for right-of-way acquisition and deeds of dedication on these two properties, we knew would slow down our process, and we would not be ready to go to construction and hold final design documents as was needed for the- as was needed for the Warner Millney project, because it was set by the use of the American Recovery Reconstruction Act funds that were very, very fast tracked. So now we completed the right of way acquisition and deed of dedication process with the two properties. You saw one, the property where the Sierra Manor Home is at the corner. We actually processed that before you, months ago. And these two took a little bit more time. So we're asking you tonight to approve the deeds of dedication, temporary construction easements for these two properties. And the, one of them, which is the smaller of these two properties, the property recognizes there's an office building over on Beaver Creek Road. And it has an entrance off Beaver Creek Road and a retaining wall. And because we'll be impacting some of that landscaping, we had to go with the settlement agreement with the property owner that would address coordinating with them for their irrigation system and making sure that the landscaping was, as per their liking at the completion of the project. So that sums up the action for you. If there's any questions that you haven't answered them.
That is the, how the major reasons for the difference in the cost of all of these?
Well, actually, the cost of the, the cost is relative size of the parcels that are being impacted. There's a much smaller acquisition area on the one that actually has a settlement agreement.
Although these are separate for shark easements, in fact, the dedication is separate.
Yes, that's correct.
Any questions? Since they're given separate items, I think we probably should. In the passing of the combination of the. Okay, so I'll do whoever makes the motion.
I move to adopt, I move to accept the attachment deed of dedication and temporary construction easement for the easement for the property addressed as 408, 410, 412, 414, and 416 Beaver Creek Road, and authorize the mayor and city recorder to execute them. And I move to approve accepting the attachment deed of dedication, temporary construction easement, and letter of agreement for property located at 416 Beaver Creek Road and authorize the mayor and city recorder. That's it down.
Second.
Can you move the second? Go ahead, please.
Commissioner Nocida.
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner President Neely?
Aye.
Next item before us is second reading of ordinance number 10-006, meaning title V, business license and regulations chapter 524, social, game, bingo, and lockup. I think she made a presentation before, I don't know if it's necessary to do so again.
How much she desired it, so.
I move to approve second reading of ordinance number 10-1006. Second.
You have a discussion?
I need to read it. This is ordinance number 10-1006, an ordinance in ending chapter 5.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to social games, bingo, and lockup.
Commissioner Nocida.
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner President Neely?
Aye.
Is that on our agenda? Is supplemental agreement number seven, the personal services agreement on Warner Millney and Mulholland Avenue intersection. I think it requires a request for additional funds. And it looks like Mr. Strachard is dealing with this. Is there any reason the city manager's here today? He was on business, he was on vacation and he's come back to be at this particular meeting. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, we are asking you to approve supplemental agreement number seven for the Wallace Engineering Personal Services Agreement that covers all of the construction engineering for the Warner Millney and Mulholland Avenue intersection project. It also ended up covering some of the design, previous supplements covered some of the design work. But we wanted to let you know what is actually, what additional services have, are covered by this particular amendment. And they are. If that's me or somebody else, but they are the, this particular amendment covers an additional construction period of five weeks. And that requires more construction legislation. And we'll be providing you with a more detailed information about why the construction inquiry has been extended after, just hopefully after the commission votes on this issue. The, there was also, the contractor had some difficulties in passing the water pressure and leak tests in the new water system that was installed. And it took quite a while to find the leaks. This is a fairly deep pipe, and it was underwater. And there was trouble with de-watering the trenches and looking for the leaks. And that required time on the site for our inspectors to be monitoring what was going on and not helping them look for the leaks, but basically monitoring it and making sure they were proceeding properly with all the procedures. So that took extra time. And there's also been quite a debate with the Oregon Department of Transportation regarding the requirement of having quality control compliance specialists throughout the project. At the beginning of the project, we were advised that an equivalent to that would be required for the RRA projects. And about, I guess it was about nine weeks ago or so, ODOT told us that, no, you need to have one who's on for all the inspector classes. And it's quite a certification. And so we've had to provide a lot of documentation and had a lot of lengthy meetings with them to prove our case that, that at the very beginning, it was all understood that this project would be covered by professional engineers. They have many years of construction inspection experience and were familiar with ODOT forms and documentation, et cetera, and the necessary kinds of laboratory testing and field inspection and field testing that is associated with the kinds of materials that were used on this project. So that's been, it's an ongoing debate we're having. But it has required a considerable amount, not only of our consultants' time, but of our staff's time as well. The originally one who started the project, we were hoping that city staff could perform all the labor interviews that are required throughout the project. And because of our, we weren't, the city staff were not, we didn't have enough to cover that. So we asked Wallace to perform those interviews. And then the other thing, we've had a few issues with subcontractors getting paid and subcontractors paying their subcontractors. And there's been a lot of time being spent between ODOT and FHWA with covering all the documentation and making sure that the claims are properly filed. And that is something that was an unanticipated work order task for the consultants. And that's been time consuming. The other thing is there's been quite a bit of extra time spent monitoring the subcontractors. This project was bid in a, as you know, this project was bid in a time where we were under really economic duress, which we kind of still are. But, so the bids and the construction climate have been very, very competitive and actually quite low, which is, it's, some people might say that's good. But an outcome of that is you often get contractors that are not including enough to cover risks in construction projects. And in this project, as you know, it's a complex, it's a multi-disciplined project. It's not just a paving project, it's not just a waterline project. It has waterline, sewer line. It had a culvert replacement, it has pavement construction, it has a signal replacement. It's got all kinds of stuff. And what we found was, in assembling that last total bid that had, that ended up being the low bid, some of the low bids from subcontractors resulted in some subcontractors that really didn't have the depth of construction experience that would enable them to perform this project in a top-notch manner, which meant that our inspectors had to do a lot of oversight and assistance, recommendations, interpreting the plans and specifications. So this again has been very time consuming for our inspectors. The, the other thing that has been discovered as we work on the RRA projects is that the paperwork is even, it's very complicated. It's almost, I don't think I can even express how much paperwork there is for these kinds of projects. It's, it's something that I think at some point we really want to talk to FHWA about and ODOT, and I'm not sure how that's ever going to happen because I've kind of been hinting at it for quite a few years with those organizations. But the RRA requirements were even greater and such as to process a contract change order was time consuming. It required a mountain of paperwork, a mountain of approvals, going through many, many desks by the inspectors. So it's just, it's just blocks of time that we have to add to this contract. And then I've already, we've already, I mentioned some of the contract claims, and those are very time consuming. And then the other thing that we hadn't anticipated in the initial scope of work was the coordination and preparation for the FHWA national audit for all of the construction costs. So all of those things are, have caused the consultant to provide more services for the city. And the services, I think, are being priced at $79,824. I'm quite certain that they're not charging us for all their hours, but they're recognizing that because this is a significant change order, they're going to be very, very fair with the city. And so that is the details behind it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a request for a break. I do agree this, there's going to be some discussion about this one in particular. Is there any problem in Commissioner State's break at this time from the back? F was in. Okay, that was good. Send them right. Please.
Here you go.
The presentation Mr. Strachard has made, are there any questions? I got a couple. Well, that's a little bit confusing to me in terms of where these are already. Apparently not all of our consultants are contractors, is that right? Or consultants, so the person that's doing all this paperwork has some part.
Well, it's under the Wallace Construction Contract. I mean, they're under the Personal Services Agreement for Consulting Services. And there's actually, they have some subconsultants working for them as well.
Is it, I guess the question is, is it having the actual manpower effort, I use that, or personal power, whatever we call it, after the south end?
Yes, this is, and as a matter of fact, they have the summary of the P's on the back sheet on your page. Wow, gosh. This is the back, it's the last page of this commission report. And it shows the number of hours. They, it does include some time by one of their subconsultants, the landscaping subconsultant. But otherwise, it's, the staff has been on the project.
What was the original, what was the original contract for period for this to be completed?
Well, this is, we were going to talk about the construction part of it and the length of the construction after. This particular agenda item is to approve the amendment to the consultant's agreement. And then we understood we want to present, or some information about why is the construction taking so long? And we are prepared to talk about that after this agenda item. And it's, that's kind of, that's one of the reasons why we have to pay the consultant more is because the construction is taking longer. Many of the, one of, many of the reasons why the construction is taking longer are very reasonable. And we will explain as to how we're actually approved, approved extending the contract period. And then there's some stuff that we haven't approved extending the schedule for that has just taken extra time that has to be dealt with. A lot of it is paperwork and et cetera.
I agree this is the second additional appropriation we've made. We had one, I think, earlier flagging on the other project.
No, that was on the Hulkam Boulevard.
That was on the Hulkam.
And that was construction. This is, this is the engineering, construction, inspection services.
Okay.
It's not part of the construction.
This is not construction at all.
No, this is for consulting services.
And we, you mentioned the budget impact here, but I don't know, I don't know the, oh, yes, it does. I don't know. Okay.
Thanks.
Do we have a motion on this for this particular?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute supplemental agreement number seven to the PLTA with Wallace Engineering to provide the additional construction engineering administration monitoring and inspection services on the Warner Millney and Mulholland Avenue intersection near alignment.
Second.
Any additional discussion? I see. Over half of the, the majority has to make. You could have a claim, you could have a litigation. It's a, it's likely, and I don't want to elaborate too much of this, that if the engineer could show that this was beyond what was expected, there'd be an equitable claim and you'd probably have to face that anyway.
Another decision? We'll call, please. Oh, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Strachard.
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Strachard for the total price of this whole job versus what we've had to pay in it. It's still been a wonderful bonus or benefit for Oregon City. And it's always unfortunate to have cost overruns. But how many million was this project stimulus money that we received on it?
We've received, we were actually going to get another $58,958 stimulus money. Just a quick response, we have had numerous supplemental, I want to make sure you understand that we're not bringing everything to you at the end. The Hulkam Boulevard flagging was something that accrued over the entire length of the project, and we mistakenly didn't bring it to periodically. This is something that we, in fact, you've seen previous supplemental agreements to this personal services agreement. And then ones that were there, within the city managers' and my authority, we have approved along the way. This is work that has occurred since April, and then here we are in July, so August. But just so you know that it's not, the bulk of everything has not been, we've been coming to you regularly and approving supplements regularly.
We'll call this.
Commissioner Nocida. Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Commissioner President Neely?
Aye.
Now you have a presentation, okay. Before your presentation, I had several different people comment to me, not only about the length of time that often as a property see construction going on. And I presume that's going to be an recent part of the, of the topic.
He's a member of the Wallace Engineering, and he has been, he was directly involved in all of the design of this project. And he's also been on the site since the construction started. And so he has, he's, knows every piece of information of the project you can imagine. I'm going to. I'm going to briefly, we're going to, Jason's going to present to you what's in this memo. I thought it'd be helpful if you had it in written form, so you can see in acronyms what it take, what has taken extra time on this project, and document it so you have it, not just words that came in and out. And as a little background to that, I wanted to quickly reiterate that the ARA projects have been, have come along with a lot of unknowns. The process and the requirements, the documentation, we're not, we were expecting ODOT to try to streamline some of the requirements that they always require for federal aid project, federal agency projects. And we're actually quite familiar with the typical ODOT requirements, because we've done a lot, we've had a lot of projects where we've had federal funding, and this ARA bill brought a different set of rules, and it came really fast. And even though that didn't know the answers to a lot of the rules and regulations, as the project has progressed. I mentioned that the paperwork has really been over the top, and it's, I think you'd want to come out and spend time in the construction office to really understand that. And the people it has to go through, and the approvals you have to get, it's, I would recommend that the Federal Highway Administration really seriously examine how they administer this money. You want, you want the user to be accountable to the taxpayer, but I think we've gone a little, a little on the overs, to the point where it's costing more money, it's frustrating contractors a lot. Our contractor is so frustrated with the red tape he's had to go through, that it creates stresses on a project that are really, you end up rather than focusing on the construction and solving problems in the field, and having some discretion to just having to rely on, oh, it's in this box, and I have to check the box, and it really takes away from the value of the project for the community. That being said, there was also, also some delays that have occurred because of the limitations of ODOT staff resources. When the ARA money came into the state, we were hoping that they would be able to beef up their staff, and that has not happened. Some of the staff at ODOT have six times the projects they normally have to work on. And so they can't deliver answers to us in the time and manner they like. And so we have delays, sitting around waiting for answers. And then in April, actually one of our, I guess it was the construction liaison from ODOT, he took another job, he actually went to private side, and they didn't replace him on our project. So the other ODOT inspector on the project was ending up having to do both of theirs work, and that just slows things down, because you have one person doing, just having a workload that they can't handle, and they're also not allowed to take overtime or, because of the budget, and they have, and they have furlough days. So these are, these are little things that do add up. The other thing I mentioned was the economic climate has caused some of the contractors and subcontractors to be bidding on projects that may not be quite the right fit for a project, but they get the low bid, and then you have, you don't have the ace contractor that has been through such a project many, many times. Not to say that we don't have a good contractor, but some of the subs we have struggled with, to be honest with you. And that slows down the project, because rather than laying X number of pipe a day, you lay X minus fifty feet of pipe a day. And so from that then, I think, Jason's going to go through his memo, not exactly in the order that it's presented, but he's going to try to summarize for you. And then I'll cover some other items that were, have slowed down the project.
As Nancy mentioned, I'm Jay Serving with Wallace Engineering, and I'm the construction manager on the project. So you guys all have a copy of the memorandum that we provided describing some delays of the project, and I'm just going to go in a little bit less detail, and as Nancy mentioned, not in the exact chronological order. So the original completion date for the project was May fourteenth, two thousand and ten, and we've experienced ninety-eight calendar days of delays, which brings us where we are of our projected completion date, this Friday, August twentieth. Yeah, so the project started with the sanitary sewer improvements within the Danison's property, and right within those first few weeks, we ran into an issue, well, a couple of few that delayed the project nine, nine calendar days. The first was an unlocated ten inch waterline that we ran into, and it caused us to have to redesign the sanitary. And also, the existing manholes that were located within the Danison's property had a, they were in poor condition, it had insufficient base, concrete basis, so we had to end up replacing these manholes.
This is, I wanted to just mention that when, whenever you're doing underground work, you're going to run into some, you don't know what's there, especially, especially in Oregon City, but our mapping, ten, fifteen years ago was not super duper, and some of the construction that occurred in Parketown, which I'm sure is just like any other town, is not the kind of thing you can hook on to with new pipes. So we had to replace where we thought we could leave it in place.
And then we had one additional contract day for a, the contractor broke and repaired a unlocated two-inch waterline. So this is just kind of summary of the overall days. We had six additional days, we ended up having to replace an additional manhole where our improvements ended, and we were to connect to the existing sanitary system. That manhole base has the same condition as the other manhole, so that was six additional days. During the project, we determined that the condition of an existing culvert across the roadway was in very poor condition, and so that was an additional eleven days of contract time to replace that culvert. And just as the contractor was basically getting ready to start that construction of that culvert replacement in June, well, actually I guess it was towards the end of May, it's during that time period where you may recall we experienced record-setting rainfall, and the ditch line that travels through this culvert was basically too full of water to be able to do the culvert replacement, and so that delayed the project an additional twenty days.
A little more on the culvert.
Oh, okay.
We had, we looked at the culvert before we scoped the project, and if we weren't on the ARA deadlines, which I don't know if you remember, but we had to have those ninety percent or hundred percent, whatever they were, plans done into ODOT, like ninety days before the bid date, they had, they had to have been a bit specific time to have the project authorized so that we could meet the ARA deadlines. And when we saw that, we realized that we couldn't include the culvert in the project. And we, at that time, we decided, well, we don't want to risk the ARA money, so let's hold off on the culvert and save it for another project, and we'll come back to it and do it in two years, whatever. And then when we got into the project, the culvert was in much worse condition than we thought, especially because we had to excavate closer to it to replace this manhole that we hadn't recognized we needed replaced, because we thought the base was sound. That's when we knew we had to add it to this project, and that was, that was a fairly significant add to the project and the schedule.
And in relation to replacing that manhole and the culvert, it became necessary to relocate a Northwest Natural Gas Line that had been installed basically directly adjacent to that manhole, and was in conflict with the new storm culvert design, because we put in a little bit larger culvert to handle the flows. And so there was a sixteen-day delay there to basically have Northwest Natural come in and do their relocation work.
And normally, when we have private utilities that are in conflict on our capital improvement projects, when we're doing the design work, we determine what, what those locates going to be for the different private utilities, and then in our agreements with them, they have forty-five days, once we've notified them that they need to move their stuff, and it's part of a public project, then they have forty-five days to come into it, and there's a lot of private utility coordination. In fact, there was a lot of private utility coordination on this job as there was with moving PGE holes and all of the other private utilities. And, but this, this relocation of the natural gas was due to the culvert and the sanitary storm manhole, which was not in the original contract document, or in the original project design. It was unknown at the time we set the construction completion date. That makes sense?
And the kind of final major delay was a, the roadway reconstruction design had changed. We originally planned for about three-quarters of length of the roadway to just pull the existing asphalt off and do some re-grading and re-compaction and some repaving. And during the utility installations, we found that the existing aggregate-based depth on the rock under the roadway wasn't as thick as previously had been assumed, and we determined that we had to do a full-depth roadway reconstruction, and that added seventeen additional contract days onto the contract.
And interestingly, we had done, we'd done a pavement design for this project, and done test holes to do the pavement design. And again, it's funny, once you get below the pavement, even if you do test holes, there's inconsistencies and uncertainties in the quality and the depths of the different materials. So we did not look out on that at all.
So basically, the numbers I've given you, that told about eighty, eighty calendar days additional to the contract, and there's a few other smaller change orders as well that go along with the five that added a few days here and there.
And these are, these are completion date change orders that the credit team has approved, they're legitimate, and we thought it was really important based on a lot of the concerns we've been hearing from the public, to make sure we have, to make sure that everyone understands and is knowledgeable about all of these things, very, in a very transparent way. There's a couple of other smaller items that we, Jason didn't spend a lot of time writing up in his, in his memo, but we also, when we were doing the waterline replacement down near the Credit Union, when we were excavating, all of a sudden we ran into a sheen on the water that was coming into, we had a lot of dewatering in every trench on this project. And even that was something that the dewatering method that the contractor was using wasn't successful in dewatering the trench, so you'd get a really good product and be able to get your workers down there and do good pipe work. So that also took a lot of time. It took longer to keep the trenches dewatered, they didn't get, it's so slow to be laying pipe when you're working in water, and, but it is what it is, and you can just, we tried to work with the contractors as much as possible on that. So then we were down there by the Credit Union putting in this new waterline, we ran into this oily sheen on the groundwater in the trench, and lo and behold, we found out that there was some kind of contaminated groundwater, we think there's some old leaking underground storage tanks closer to the PGE site on Warner-Milney Road. And so we had to call out our environmental consultants, and it actually was, it was finding a way to get into the Credit Union ditch, and so we had to, we spent a lot of time doing remedial action down there to keep the oils contained in the material, testing, testing groundwater, and then coming up with a solution that we felt would seal the groundwater from moving out of the trenches and getting, moving on. So we had, it took quite a while to research the products, get ODOT to buy off on it, and so that's a little item that just took a lot of time. And I don't think it added a whole lot of construction days for it, but it was part of the process. The other thing is we ran into heating oil and septic tanks up at the corner here where we had acquired Rightofway a number of years ago, and that took time to go through the process of getting the approvals done in accordance with the EQ rules. There was also an existing concrete foundation at that location, and it was filled with trash, it was covered up then, and there was the corner, so we had to excavate all that out and haul the trash and dispose of it properly. We ran into some tough luck with our, the boring subcontractor who was putting in the conduits for all the electrical lines for signals and, and the communication lines that are publicly owned. They ended up, we had a lot of trouble with them cracking the sidewalks, they were boring underneath sidewalks, and there was just a lot of damage to sidewalks, so that was something we had to deal with contractors on. There was other private utility locase, for example, at the time, the contractor broke the natural gas line outside of the police department, you probably all remember that. That was, that is, there was more than one natural gas breakage, and there's, I mean, shut you down for the day, really does.
Let's see if I might. Does the commission want to take a minute or to read this report from Wallace Worth? I'm actually thinking this might be worthwhile to put on our website, so when citizens have lunching, they can sort of read this, and then let Nancy go ahead and maybe stand down now, and unless you have questions about it individually or as a group, we can address those now. If you know you have questions, or get back to us after tonight. If you have other questions, we'll make sure we get those out to you.
And actually, the smaller items that I was going to cover, I'm finished with anyway, so that's my little name.
I know that you're good at having someone outside and making great people too. I mean, we can think basically what we heard, we can give a general description of what has gone on. Have you, have you worked, have you worked with projects in this yet?
Part of the job. But I know it's frustrating for the public, and we're very excited about having this idea. And everyone has been tremendously cooperative about their leaders you've had to work with, so.
Thank you.
So we're done with our explanation, if you have any questions, please ask, otherwise we'll wrap up and put it on the website.
Thank you very much for coming, I appreciate you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. This is on to the next agenda item, and this is potential action on, excuse me. Yes, this is for potential acquisition on thirteen, four, four, five, Anthony Lane. I don't know if pretty much anything, but there's only two. Okay, very good. Very much more.
Okay, well, this is a property on Gaffney Lane that was, we suggested the commission consider acquiring, because the right-of-way for having Gaffney Lane be an urbanized street section through there is constricted by the house that sits on the edge of the road, and the house is for sale by a willing seller, and we've been working with them to come up with an acquisition price that would be satisfactory to the city commission, and the price that we're at, that they're, we have counter offered with, that they've counter offered with, which we are recommending the city commission accept, is two-hundred-and-forty-thousand
There might be some, that may be sufficient for our discussion for the voting. We're requiring this property because of the city, the facilities at a particular site, we're not intending to hold on to that property unless they were, they were trying to find out how to deal with the, with a house that's there in a way that perhaps permits a future owner to do a further development and so forth, but this is not a property that we intend to hold on in depth of, it's just, it's also expensive for us to build this route and to add the needed right-of-way, the required right-of-way, and trying to do a condemnation of some sort, it would probably be more expensive. We weren't thinking of a condemnation, but the opportunity came, this is something that the commission agreed on, and we should go ahead and see that. I don't know if there's any other discussion necessary to, to go on to the vote, but whether we entertain some discussion afterwards as to the potential to use of the property, we might do that, considering the commission's purpose. Is there any, any questions on the item before this, or give the discussion, you know, to be able to see it?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, both for the city attorney and for staff on this. Obviously, it's not a surprise, I don't think, to any citizen that this is something that the city commission doesn't get in confidential discussions by law pursuant to the Open Meetings Act in executive session. So a lot of what we base a purpose on is discussed in executive session, but what I'm kind of curious about is the transition from that confidential process to the public process. For example, from a policy perspective, I'm not comfortable, I don't think, with a vote tonight. And here's why. Once we've made this public, the public, I mean, we have discussed an executive session of it. That is being made known to the public only now. And so to the extent that there, I think, should be a possibility for the public to have some input, for example, whether or not they are comfortable with the purpose of ours. I don't know if I'm comfortable just jumping into a vote on this like that. Similarly, a lot of the materials that we have been given in executive session are not in the commission report, which actually, oh, I'm sorry. Never mind, is the one drawing that convinced me is actually in this, in this package. But as far as, you know, deliberations in, in how much of the, you know, the executive session discussion can be transferred into the public realm, I'm curious about that. Do you have any insights on that?
Commission President, into Commission Nocia. This is the first question. I can tell you what you can do. And I think you can, if you wish, complete the transaction tonight. What you should do really is up to you as policymakers. As far as the public record issue, I'd have to look at it a little further because we're now, as I think you suggested on the cusp, where we're clearly within, until this evening, before action or before action is contemplated, within a, an exception to the public records law. Whether the then subsequent discussion of it brings it out of it, that's what I'd have to look at. Right now, I would suggest that staff keep the confidential materials. If there's a request, I'll certainly look at it and make a, an opinion so you can deal with it. But until the transaction is completed, I'd, I'd be a little uncomfortable in looking at our discussions getting there. Not the facts, but the, the policy discussions.
Okay. So then I would turn my question to Mr. Cruckhauer. I assume that at the point we make all this information public, and I'd like, this is the sales price. There's obviously a sales agreement in place. It'd be weird to, to reveal the sales price without something in place signed sealed and, you know, binding sales offer and acceptance.
It's contingent upon the city commission approval.
Okay. But is there any, in the, in the sale, in that, even with the contingency, is there any time limitations that would prevent us, for example, from holding this over until the next city commission meeting so that, you know, we could have the next agenda item with more than skeletal information that is in tonight's agenda?
That would be, the seller's request would be closed by August thirty first. And that's
And your question?
Yes. And that's probably in the counter offer, which has not been signed. The counter offer has not been signed. So, yeah.
The counter offer has not been signed by seller?
The counter offer was what the seller sent back to us when we made our offer, original offer. As you recall, the asking price is two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And our comp price that we got from our study was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And the original offer we made to them was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we're right now, then, we offered two hundred and thirty thousand dollars and they counter offered with two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that has not been signed. And in that counter offer, they've requested a closing before August thirty first. Actually, they requested one even earlier, but we would be countering with closing on August thirty first, try to meet their request. Because they don't know they're working with the city commission. They know they're working with someone that has somebody who
Well, they know as of tonight.
Yeah, well, it's difficult when you're, the way we worked it was that, the way we presented it was that the buyer had to get approval from another party to do the transaction, to get the finals, to have the final document signed.
But if we don't, okay, here's, here's what would motivate me to move forward tonight. He said, well, we're going to wait till September so we can get the public time to notice this. And August thirty first passes and nothing happens. And the buyer now knows that it's the city that's a potential purchaser. If we don't meet their request to meet August thirty first with that public knowledge, they could walk us for more.
They could.
This is all of the, we're in a second.
Yes, of course. You also have the opportunity, if you wish, to hold a special meeting, same thing as always in usual. And, or to have a conference call with it being open to the public. Those are tactical things.
Yeah. I think my, my preference, I think, would probably be to move forward tonight, but maybe ask the city manager to review our real estate policies and purchase procedures to kind of like key in on whether it could be structured so that in the future, there is time when we negotiate so that there is, you know, that adequate time between, you know, negotiation and private discussion in executive session and allowing for, you know, a settlement meeting with full knowledge and full information.
And I can try to address that right now, actually. Regardless of what the staff policy is or admin policy, some councils simply prefer, like if you're purchasing this property as part of a step in a park's master plan that's been duly presented, discussed, deliberated, and the public's well aware of it, that's a different matter. So I, I would not encourage the council to adopt a hard and fast rule on that because the circumstances of every transaction vary widely. So if you're, if you're comfortable assuming that there's not an undue risk that you'll lose the purchase opportunity by waiting till the first, and if the balance of the council thinks that it would be enough community interest, is that going to change your mind, for example? Or is some, some input from the public going to change your mind or potentially change your mind, then you may want to hold off if you think that's, you know, worth that risk. The risk doesn't sound like it's very high, but I don't know what the motivations of the seller are and how strongly they feel about the August thirty first date. It's really the discretion of the commission on whether or not you want to, you could direct us to pursue, proceed with all reasonable steps to complete the transaction and then have the actual vote on the transaction itself, the closing occur at the next meeting.
But David, then you, that's past the August thirty first then?
Well, I think that the need the city and the school district have a lot to lose on, on this. That's what I, I think. So I'd be inclined to move on it tonight because we've seen other transactions go upside down when they find out the city's looking at it.
Well, what I might add is because this is a, the council's motivation here is public safety interest. And councils really have a lot of exclusive authority over the public interest when it, when it involves safety. And there isn't, there isn't, there's not a lot of room for delay because when it comes to safety, you have to act sometimes swiftly. And so I understand Commissioner Nocia's desire, and I think all of you share that desire, to have more than, rather than less transparency and public input. But on a purchase like this for an issue affecting public safety, I think you'd be well within your traditions and practices to proceed this evening.
Let me, let me just ask a question. I take the audience serious. It's disgusting about the need for the property without knowing the reality. Is there a way that we could site that up onto the screen? Why don't I do that? And so I, I think it'd be a real benefit for the public to know what, what it is of interest to the commission that we're interested in proceeding with. And I am most aware of the public, but not, if you're aware of that, if you could have a site map put up on the screen, do that. I think you can see the area outlined in orange is the property we're interested in. If you look at the sidewalk right-of-way at Gaffney Lane and on the opposite side of the property on Gaffney Lane, you can also see the curvature of the street there. It'd be, it'd be a great amenity to have that area, street street now, the sidewalks be continuous. They have a lot of bus traffic through this particular area. And the city, wherever to undertake this on its own, will probably have to look for condemnation procedures. And you can look at the setback in the house. There'd be no way we could do this without condemnation, you know, condemnation procedures, including the house. Here in this case, we've never discussed this property before. Here in this case, we have the opportunity to secure this property from a willing seller and to then go ahead and set up the easements and ivories that we need to go ahead, to make the Gaffney Lane a, not only, you think they're a, a, a better facility for the school and for the neighborhood, but also for pedestrian traffic as well and to serve some of the bus traffic there. This is why I think it'd be great for all members of the commission to proceed on this particular property. And I just wanted to let the public know what the specific interest was of this, of what of this particular property. I think it's pretty obvious when you look at the particular layout, what the discussions and executive sessions and why we decided to go ahead and make office on this property and make them up as well. So where do you, where does the commission want you to go at this point?
I, I have another speaking request. And I think Commissioner West is also.
Commissioner West is on the first line.
No, I'm done.
You're done? Okay. You're still highlighting yours.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that discussion, Commissioner Neely. That is kind of exactly the type of policy discussion that I want. That we go through an executive session, that, you know, we make judgments on property purchases like this. I'm very supportive of this purchase. And I, you know, having gone through the fact that unlike other properties that I have a close purchase of, the, you know, the purchase price on this property does mesh with, you know, the comparables and studies about, you know, value and the utility of being able to have Gaffney be a clear shot straight street without having to go through condemnation. I think it's very much in the public's interest. And I guess what, what I'm interested in achieving, and I'll say first that I agree with Commissioner West on as far as the interest in making a purchase, an approval tonight on this particular piece of property, given the issue of the August thirtieth date and the uncertainties through the purchase step waiting past that request. But I did want to respond to the city manager because, you know, given the experience of this purchase, I, I think I still do want to move us towards a regular policy of allowing, you know, at least one meeting where, unlike tonight, you know, the commission report, the commission report that was put up on the web, I think on Friday, these are typically put up, maybe Thursday, Friday, it has none of the information in it that this, that Commissioner Neely just displayed, just talked about. There's nothing in there that would alert to the public as to why we're going after this property. And, and I'm not sure, based on the fact that we had an executive, we were going to have an executive session before the meeting tonight, that it would be advisable to have such information in the commission report last Friday. But I do want to reach a point where, you know, between the time that we do reach that point of disclosure and the time that we actually take a vote, there is at least some time, maybe one commission meeting, where we do have time to get input from the public on this. And I think that should be a regular policy. And the point you made, for example, on if there was like a public parks purchasing program, even, even then, even in those plans that we set for purchasing property for parks, we don't know what purchasing price is going to be. And on each individual acquisition, there is going to be, you know, a negotiating price even when it's identified in a plan, where I am going to want to give the public at least one meeting, you know, to have notice of the price and then to be able to, you know, give us feedback on that before we take that vote.
Well, my, my point was not to disagree with you or to tell you that you should or shouldn't have a policy. My point was this is a commission's discretion. And it's not the staff. The staff wouldn't be imposing a policy, for example, on the commission. If our commission wants to impose a policy like that, then that's up to you. There are situations, and I can think of a couple in my career where there have been emergency purchases that were necessary and there wasn't time for the kind of deliberation. But that's a really rare exception.
And then it could be part of a policy. And if I have a policy, a provision for emergency.
But that policy, Commissioner, will be up to your colleagues if they, if all the commission believe, you know, the commissioner wants such a policy, you can have it informally by, by an agreement amongst yourselves. Or you can try to put that into some sort of council rules that, of course, can be modified by future commissions.
May I turn then to my colleagues and inquire whether they would be interested in, you know, work session on this, that question?
I heard Bethany Lewis mentioned on the list.
Well, I was just going to say at the point of order, the item on the agenda is purchasing of this property. And that we're getting into some policy discussions tonight that have not been noticed to the public. And I think they're inappropriate for tonight. And whether we put it on a work session, that's, you need three votes to do that. So if you've got your three votes to make a policy on it, then we can put it on a work session.
I hear we can have a question, Jim, or me. And I've heard two voices on either side of this. I mean, yes, this is appropriate, topical for a work session. I would agree with that. We're not making decisions on policy here. Was there anything else?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of one, three, four, four, five, Gaffney Lane in the public interest to straighten out the, hopefully at some point, to straighten out the road to have safety for children over there and vehicles.
All right, here's second. We will have discussion after the second. We have other people's, well, speak this. Maybe we should second at this point.
One second.
Would you want to put in a, a purchase price?
I would say the purchase price of two hundred and twenty thousand even. Was that it?
Okay. The motions are made by Commissioner West, and I believe that Commissioner Nocia second or first. And I have Commissioner Smith on this. He's second. Second is too late, but he's the next one. He's come at this.
Well, I was, first of all, I just want to declare that I am an employee of the Oregon City School District. I don't think that affects my decision, but if anyone has problems with that.
I don't think that affects my decision, but if I have problems with that. You know, I, 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 this is, this is one of those pieces of property where it's, it's completely obvious that the road needs to be fixed there. You know, the opportunity may have never came, come to us. And so I, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a very, it's, it's one that we have to act on. I do agree with Commissioner Seda in, in, in the, the point that, you know, it's kind of nice to let, get the citizens' input on this. I can't imagine that most of this, there's not a lot of citizens that I think would oppose this, quite frankly, but, but in terms of the discussion and price and stuff, I can understand that. So I, I have no, I have no problem myself with this going forward tonight. I also have no problem with having a special meeting if we feel that we need to give some time for citizens on it. But it's, so I think I'll open to that as well.
Mr. O'Brien, I'm sure you make your comments completely. As it's coming up, it is all the intent of the city hall to hold onto this property and to get the, ease the targeted so that we require and then that, I assume appropriately to give my children more money back in the process. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes, Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. I would agree with all the comments that are being made. I think it's a wise decision to purchase this property. I'm always very interested in public safety, and I think it would, in many respects, improve public safety. However, I also feel that there is something, if we do straighten that out, that causes greater concern to me as well about public safety. And I would mention that in its current configuration, it acts a little bit like a bump out X. Once you take that bump out, out of there, we're going to have some speeding of vehicles. We use that on a routine basis for access to and from shopping areas. I would ask Chief Conway to monitor once that's straightened out to let people at least be aware that we are trying to keep the speed limit where it should be. And that's whether schools in session or not in session.
Thank you.
Well, if there are any official decisions, we have a vote, please.
Commissioner Missy.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Hi.
Commissioner Neely.
Hi.
And Commissioner President Neely.
All right. Right before it's all over, have your consent agenda. I don't know anybody asking anything for that.
I just wanna ask the city manager, you were a go for a work session on this topic. You got the word, okay.
The recorder, I'm sure, has it on the agenda and will be seeing it in the future location.
We have your votes.
I'm looking for a vote.
We move by Commissioner West or second by Commissioner Smith, the second in the poll, vote please.
Commissioner Seda.
Hi.
Commissioner West.
Hi.
Commissioner Smith.
Hi.
Commissioner President Neely.
Hi.
I believe on our agenda, we next had the city manager's report. So it turns out we had good reason to have you here. We have a discussion, I advise if you can.
Well, it was worth it just to hear the council president refer to the bridge.
Yeah.
And relive my prior bond. I appreciate that very much. I have some good news tonight. A couple things. Our trolley ridership is up by more than 18%. And I know some of you probably saw that, but I, I think that's really good, especially given that some of the concerns that many of us had about the effect of the bridge construction on our downtown. Also, the city has won another, I believe this is, we've won more than one of these, but we now have won another award for our website, our new website, that I think is brand new, but it's new within the last 12 months or so. And I've asked the city recorder Nancy I to give you a brief update on what the award was and why we achieved it.
It's my pleasure to announce this award. I wanted to tell you about it. The, the city of Oregon City has been awarded the top government website award in the state of Oregon.
Wow.
By Juggle.com.
That's right.
And the, it was, it was J U G G L E.
Oh, I thought you said Google. Oh, G O U G.
Juggle.com. And it's for excellence in the web design and the content. Juggle.com is an online encyclopedia and reference site. And it's a very trusted research website. So we feel very honored that they chose us to be, to honor us in this way. Some of the features of our website that are really great and especially appreciated are the online application processes. You can pay your utility bill online. You can visit each department's little microsite. So every department has its own mini-site on our website. There's an online citizen comment request form. Just submit your comment or your request online. There's outstanding mapping resources. You can watch your city commission meetings live on the internet. And of course, there's beautiful banners and photos and videos of city history and events that take place which is groundbreaking and so forth. So we never had that before and it's a real asset on our site. So I'd like to recognize David Knoll, who was the lead on this. He's our information technology supervisor. And of course, we can't leave out Alkney Design, who designed our logo and created the graphic design for the site. And also Aha Consulting, who did the programming. So the, the combination of all those, those aspects made for a beautiful website. So we're pretty proud of it. I love the website. So that's great.
Thank you, Nancy. And thanks to the other staff, many of them who worked on this. It's not just one department. It's all of them working together, and I very appreciate their efforts. Also, I want to let the commission know that you probably are aware of this, but I'm reminding you that there's gonna be a rate increase coming from Tri-City. I'm gonna be asking them for a, a letter to explain the rate increase and what it, the reasons behind it and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, the city's in a position, more or less, it's sort of in a pass-through. They increase our rates and we then have to pass those on. But I think that it will be an effective tool to communicate to our citizens from Tri-City why the Board of County Commissioners chose to authorize those increases. So we'll be asking for that. I don't know how much information we'll have, but we're gonna be asking for that so that can be nailed out with the, when the utility rates are increased. Let's see here. I think Nancy A has a couple more things she wants to talk about.
Thank you. Two items. One is, we've been working with the state speed board, decision makers and the school district in Clackamas County on the speed limit out on Beaver Creek Road, South of Clackamas Community College. And we've also been working on these, the schools, the school zone signage out there. The district had requested a flashing school zone sign. And the county originally was not particularly supportive of it because they don't really recommend it for high schools. And typically flashing school zone assemblies are associated with applications where there are a lot of pedestrians. And this particular need really has more to do with the intersection and a number of different things. But we did come to consensus with the county and the school district that we would like the district to pursue a safe routes to school plan and that one of the outcomes of the state routes to school plan should be, to show any, well, to, to have a flashing speed zone in front of a high school. So we then also just found consensus that we would like to lower the speed limit on Beaver Creek Road. Today it's 45 miles an hour. And we went to the speed, the speed zone board, which is through the state. The state is in charge of establishing speed limits in, in the state of Oregon. And they, we went to them with a request for 35 mile an hour speed zone, contemplating the future environment of Beaver Creek Road out there as another urban arterial in Oregon City where most of ours are posted at 35 miles an hour, and anticipating the future concept plan area development. They were reluctant to agree to that at this time because the environment is not, it's not, doesn't produce 35 mile an hour speeds. Instead, people are going more like 48 miles an hour out there. So they would, they really had trouble making that match. And so they did agree to a reduction to 40 miles an hour for the time being. And they reckon, they were perfectly happy with us coming back in the future as the environment changes on Beaver Creek Road. And then, so at this point now, we're, we're working with the school district to the, to get their safe routes to school plan going. The city's gonna offer up technical services for mapping. And that I believe will be a priority for the high school in the next school year. And then after that, then we'll be working with them on this actual school zone signage itself. There was a request to remove the existing school zone signage, but we are working, we're working very hard with the state and the county to request that we don't move it until we've completed the complete routes to school plan. So you know that because it's, becomes very contentious and the school board is very concerned about this. So if you, if you're, if, if you get phone calls or that, I wanted you to know that our staff's been working really productively with our other partners, the county and the school district on this. But there's been a little bit of contentiousness, so I want to make sure you're aware of it. And we just, we just exchanged emails with Ted Consta today that he's pleased the, the progress we're making and things are quite calmed down right now. Then the other thing I wanted to let you know about is.
Just a moment. Can I ask you a question on that?
As you can imagine, I've heard a lot about that. The question I have really is, the, the reduced speed would start where? Does it go from, basically from, does it stay consistent from the shopping center to the store? Or does it, does it lower in front of the school?
It would start where, where, where the 45 mile an hour zone starts today and goes out to the city limits. That would turn into a 40 mile an hour zone out to the city limits.
Where does that?
45 would start at Community College.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Okay. Because the concern, the concern, and I, I've seen it every day, and, well, not every day in the school year, it's, it's, it's really, as you know, not so much in front of the school. It's a problem. That is a problem, but we have no sidewalks from essentially the college to the school, which means all the students that are walking along Beaver Creek Road walk in the bike lane. That's maybe not necessarily a huge problem unless someone's turning left on whatever road. Well, no.
Myers.
No. No. You're going out from the college out on Beaver Creek.
Lotus.
Yeah, thank you. What happens is traffic backs up all along there. If someone takes a left on that road, everyone passes in the bike lane. Which obviously you're not supposed to do, but there's, they pass on the bike lane. And, and unfortunately, that's where kids are walking. And so, you know, not to mention the bike lanes right there, you know, on the traffic lane, near the traffic lane anyway. So any reduced speed, I think really has to happen all the way from the shopping mall to the school. And I mean, even if we can go lower than that, it, it's, or that some way to address the gap in sidewalks from essentially the college to the school, which, you know, won't probably happen unless there's new development there.
You might, one addition is that I don't know if the county's paved Beaver Creek Road yet, but they, you know, they are planning to pave Beaver Creek Road this summer. And what they, how they designed the pavement reconstruction is they widened the shoulders a little bit and they narrowed down the previous 12-foot travel lanes to 11-foot travel lanes. And this is pretty much working with us. We requested this, but they were happy to do it to, to create, create as much space as possible for peasant bikes out there because it's, you're right, there's hardly any shoulder and it's not a friendly place for any pedestrian or bicyclist to be. So after the paving job, we'll have probably a good five-foot shoulder on both sides of Beaver Creek Road where there's nothing today. So that will help a little bit. It's not, it's anyway a long-term solution, but I think it'll help some. And, and then we'll also have the 11-foot travel lanes, which should slow traffic a little bit as well.
Thank you.
I hear enough. You said it's a city limit, so. Yeah, I mean, it, oh, and all road. Is it still beyond that to, to the barrier of bounds? Are those around the city limit?
Um, you know, I'll have to get back to that, Commissioner Neely. It was either to the city limits or the urban growth boundary. I can't recall.
Okay, if you could, you mentioned through the college and that's, you know, I was wondering, well, that would be included, I guess, as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
And then the other item I have was that, as you may recall, we did a traffic study about a year ago now to look at adding bike lanes on Warner Millman Road between Molalla and Beaver Creek Road. And the traffic study we provided you that, there was lengthy presentation on that. And then we were also, then people that were excited about getting bike lanes, they're saying, well, gosh, why don't you look at the section between Beaver Creek Road and Leland and Lynn? And so we had the same traffic engineer look at those, same criteria, same, kind of the same drill. But they thought, they had, they came up with the same findings that none of the driveways had enough traffic demand to warrant the center turn lane. And they, and based on our project system plan, the recommendation is to go ahead and strike bike lanes there and remove the center turn lane. And we are in the process right now of writing letters to property owners along there to make sure they have an opportunity to learn about the project and ask questions. And if possible, we may combine that with our Leland Grove reconstruction project, which was in your packet tonight in the consent agenda for the striking.
Okay, that's all we have. I did want to make a comment on the 18% increase in the trolley use. One of the reasons I wanted to do this, I was asked by a former mayor that served on the city commission with another former mayor, who always opposed dollars, would have followed. He wanted to buy a third one and so forth. An 18% increase represents a count from the beginning of the summer, if I understand. And it, it, the total, the total ridership we had up to the day you supplied it, there's almost 6,000 riders on the trolley. And that's, that's rather substantial. And I believe the decision primarily to buy a third trolley was an issue that sometimes we got one of our trolleys down and we, we don't want to have scheduled services that we can't meet.
We were using a senior center man to, as a trolley and it doesn't quite fit the icon.
So just in case that other person that was a former mayor that imposed, that, that planned to, that didn't like trolleys decides to file for the mayor's position or the 2024, I wanted to make sure that that was before the public. Anyway. I don't, you hear, yeah, I think it's higher than that. I believe the mayor's supposed to give the next report. I don't hear speaking now. Are any of the other members of the commission have any reports that they wish to make?
I have one short one. Or do you have one?
Yeah, you have, you, you don't need.
I just was going to let everyone know that I was recently appointed, or I applied and was recently appointed to the Clackamas County Tourism Development Council. And one of the reasons, or several of the reasons they were, said that they were interested in having me on there was with our work on Main Street. And Main Street certainly represents some cultural and historical tourism. And the Main Street program is widely used in Clackamas County, or they've been working on getting it widely used. The other reason was is that Oregon City was one of the partners to, to examine the feasibility if we could have a national heritage area with the Well-Elimered Falls National Heritage Area Coalition. So I look forward to my work on that. We just met, we had a retreat just this past week. And you're, you're gonna hear a lot of the same things from me that you've been hearing from Mr. Fraser and from us all year. They're in a, a body in transition in flux. They have a new director that's been there, what, four months? And half the board is new. So we're spending a lot of time just getting to know each other and reexamining where we all want to go. So some of the rumors have been that there's going to be a drop in historical or with the heritage community in funding that. And I have not heard anything of the sort. The Maho Territory Grant at this point is being saved and used. It might be updated and refreshed a little bit and expanded. One of the, a couple of directions that they'd like to add to what they're already doing is photographs and more visual images of recreational tourism, kayaking, canoeing, rafting, that kind of thing. They're also looking at the county scoring the legalities of agri-tour, which is a very interesting concept with that's having weddings and big events out in the country that aren't zoned for it. Wine wreaths, maybe having a big event. So that was really, that would be interesting to see how that plays out, if Mr. Sullivan is agreeing. Never a dull moment in this business. So that's it for this time, and I'll be reporting as we go on.
Maybe, Commissioner. Any other?
Does that, does that come out?
No, it's already coming, yes. You ready to talk?
I don't know what came from.
Well, I do have, I do have a comment then.
There it was, I don't think it's.
I don't know if this is a simple nonsense or what, but well, as I say, the tri-coast kind of, it's going on right now. And, oh, man. I, I spent the first day at the county fair cooking hot dogs. Actually, I shouldn't say the first day cooking hot dogs, corn dogs, prado puffs, oh my god. Sorry, Don Anderson. I mean, prado puffs. And I found out, really great thing to do on a really hot day, if you're cooking prado puffs at the Oxford's trailer, is to burn yourself as early as possible in the day.
So you can get out.
So you didn't have to cook those prado puffs anymore. So I burnt, burnt myself really badly. And, and, but continued to make snow cones and various other things throughout the day. But, so go off to the fair and enjoying that. So whoever wrote that down, thanks. I guess it's a little insane that people should go to the fair.
I understand you raise a pronto puffs side. I'm sure that people will be there tomorrow morning. You're welcome to go back tomorrow morning.
Are you working tomorrow?
Yes.
I know it'll be cooler tomorrow, but.
Sure, you're, you're in over the bus.